This would be public comment on any items that have relevance to Missoula County Public Schools, which we won't be discussing as a board tonight. As we have indicated in the past, we ask anyone who wants to make public comment to raise your hand. Virtually is the best way to do it. Your hand will go up in a queue and as your hand is raised, we would, and we call on you in the order in which hands were raised. We then ask you to unmute yourself. Provide your name, spell your first or last name or both if it's an unusual spelling. We ask you to limit your public comment on non-agenda items, and this would actually also apply to agenda items. To three minutes per speaker. And if you do represent an organization, if you could go ahead and identify that organization. Then we do have written correspondence attached to the agenda. So with that being said, I see that Jonette Teasdale had a hand raised first in the queue. So Mr. Teasdale, if you can go ahead and unmute and provide your public comment.
Yes, hi, I am a senior at Hellgate High School. And I was told that there would, this would be a proper time to discuss the proposal of going back to school five days a week this year. And so I just wanted to say briefly that I personally through COVID, and I know that this goes for a lot of my friends, especially seniors while applying to colleges and such, have had a lot of struggles with mental health and being separated from our peers and us, you know, like us teenagers were pretty social. And so being separated and not being able to see our friends and then just kind of having to be alone. It has had a serious effect on mental health and having those Mondays off for me has been huge. I, I work. And so having time to kind of relax and gather myself mentally has been huge because even though four days a week at school is not that much, it's big. Because this year specifically, it's been tough to handle anxiety going around a school that I know can be filled with COVID, you know, lots of, lots of people that I am around could have COVID. Someone in my English class had it last week. And I'm lucky that I was outside of six feet distance from them, but a bunch of my classmates had to, uh, had to quarantine for 10 days. So I just would like to say that the Mondays off are huge for me and plenty of my friends to handle our mental wellness and that I hope that it continues as is. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teasdale. We appreciate your public comment. And I see that Luke O'Connell has a hand raised, Mr. O'Connell, go ahead and unmute and provide your public comment.
Yeah, hi, I'm another senior from Hellgate and I, I also stand in opposition to the move to five days a week. I think there are a lot of negatives that come to, come with a five, move to a five day week. And I, I worry that we're doing it too quickly. I, I'd like to see more data from the four day week before we do so. And I think that it, it puts teachers, students and staff at risk. If you look at how it affects, affects students, it, it takes away some of the flexibility that they need to handle times like these. Some students are working like Jonah Teasdale said in his comment. Some students are using it for mental health and some are using it to catch up on schoolwork. And I, I think that that flexibility is really valuable to a lot of students. It's allowed them to kind of get, get used to these new conditions a lot easier. And then moving on to teachers, I think it's really valuable for them because they're having to teach 90 minute class periods. And I don't know about you guys, but I've never been able to keep somebody's attention for 90 minutes, let alone 45. So I, I think that having that time, one, to help with preparing those 90 minute class periods. And two, to help with online curriculums for students that are quarantined. Having Mondays helps them do that a lot. And I think taking that away might put our education at risk and it might make it harder for them to get their jobs done. And then moving on to staff, I think that having those Mondays allows nurses to contract trace in a much more efficient way than they would have if we were to move to five days a week. And additionally, it allows janitors to deep clean without having students in the school. And I, I worry that moving to five days a week would allow the spread of COVID. One, because there's more exposure and two, because there isn't time for school staff to take care of the students and make sure that they're okay. So, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connell for your public comment. We appreciate that. I don't see any other hands. Oh, Tricia Owens just raised her hand. Go ahead and unmute Ms. Owens and provide public comment.
My name is Tricia Owens, T R I C I A O W E N S. Thank you for your time tonight. I am a second grade teacher at Lowell Elementary School and I have worked there for 12 years. I just wanted to say that this, that it has come to our attention that our social worker that has been assigned to us for about the last three years has now been assigned to a middle school for half of her day. I want to say that I totally understand that the middle school also needs the social worker and was originally at a middle school level. However, I don't think that right now is the time that we should be removing this resource from our school at the expense of our elementary students and our staff at Lowell. Over the three years or so that she has been there alongside our principal, they have put in protocols and interventions in place that have helped our staff work as a trauma-informed school to meet the needs of our students. Some of the data to keep in mind is that usually in a normal year, we run about like 290 or so students. And before we had our social worker along with our current principal, we were looking at about 2,000 office discipline referrals a year, which is a lot. But because of the protocols and interventions that we've put in place with our social worker, last year we were at about 1,200. I know we were gone the last three months, but even at that pace, it would have been about 400 lower than the year before. This year, we were, we're currently at about 128 office discipline referrals. And 43 of those occurred in the first five months of school. While that number has doubled to 85 in the past three weeks, once everybody has been remote. So I understand that we have, that there's a need everywhere, but at this time, I just, for one person to have to try and be the social worker for 700 kids at middle school, 200 plus kids at an elementary school. She's also in charge of MTSS and those things. She's the only person at our school full-time that's able to do formal behavioral assessments, which we do regularly. When we think about the MTSS levels for our students, you know, I'd say probably 50 to 60% of our kids qualify at a tier two level. So we're doing FBAs so that we can figure out where their behavior is, what's causing it? And how we can be proactive to get them in the classroom and learning and ready to be productive each, every day. So I would just like that to be looked at again. And please don't take our social worker. We might need to look at other avenues, whether it's hiring or anything, but that's been a great resource for us. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Owen. I'm looking to see if there are any other hands up. I don't see any, and I did see that a person by, with the first name Diane has joined us on Zoom. And I didn't know if that was trustee Lorenzen or a different person by the name of Diane. Is trustee Lorenzen here? So it, a different person. Okay, with that being said, then we move on to six on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. This is the portion of pardon?
It is Diane Lorenzen.
Okay, thanks.
And Marcia, item five, actually.
Oh, thank you. Yes, thank you. I need help these days with reading my own agenda or our own agenda. So thank you, Dr. Watson. We're on to five, which are reports and announcements. Five A is the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report for the month of January 2021. It's a routine health insurance trust fund report we usually see every month, as long as it's available. Sometimes we move two into one month. And then five B is announcements from the superintendent. So go ahead, Dr. Watson, apologies about that.
Oh, no problem. Thanks trustees for the remote meeting this evening, just for the public's information that's on the Zoom. We had some concerns about a positive COVID case and had a lot of close contacts in, in, in our administrative level. So it just seemed appropriate to, to move to a remote meeting this evening, just not knowing who would be able to attend in person or not. So appreciate your flexibility. Hopefully we'll be back together in person socially distanced and all the protocols in the near future. I wanted to make the COVID reports part of my bi, bi-weekly updates to the board. And so I'm going to share my screen and, and just talk about the data from the end of the week last week. See if I can do this without crashing everything. Hopefully you can see that. Yes, maybe.
Yep, we can see it.
Great. So this data sheet is constructed at the end of every week and is posted on our website. Going back quite a ways, I think we first started making these in January and then we have data going all the way back till September. But I've shown you this data sheet before, so hopefully it'll look familiar to you. We've got basically six different metrics that we're keeping track of. And I thought it would be beneficial to make sure that we show you this during our, during my superintendent update at board meetings. Just in case we don't have COVID as one of the agenda items, we make sure that you know we're still tracking this information. So the first thing we look at is the total number of new cases per week over seven days. And so at the end of last week, if you look at the seven days prior to 12, to 219, we had 12 new cases over the course of a week. That, that is down a little bit from the previous week. The previous week we had 16 new cases. But I do want to point out that in these two weeks, we've noticed a high number of students that are tied to a cluster in extracurricular activities at the high school level. So if you look at our case data, our summary chart, you'll see the high school numbers are higher than middle school or elementary and, and it's primarily due to a couple of clusters that we're experiencing in extracurricular sports, extracurricular activities. But this week, this last week was a little, little better than the previous week. Also, we track the number of active cases. So remember, active case is different than a new case. A new case would be, we just track the number of people that tested positive. An active case is, as soon as you test positive, you're basically active for about 10 days. You're considered an active case. So we also track active cases on a particular date. We usually use Mondays as the day that, that we record the active cases. So as of, as of Monday, we had nine active cases across the district. We also compare that to the state, I'm sorry, to the, the county. Number of active cases in the county per 10,000 residents. We use that because we have about 10,000 people in our district, including students and staff. So in the county, at that same moment in time, there were 21.3 active cases per 10,000. So we're still lower than the county, but we always look at a percentage, like what percentage lower? We were about 42% of the county in active cases. It's a little better declining from, getting a little better last week from previous weeks. But again, remember that we have a cluster of students that are positive in extracurricular activities, which has impacted our data for the last two weeks. The next one is we look at the route of transmission. You're going to notice that this one is usually green or yellow. It was orange primarily because of the cluster that I just described. So we considered that in-school transmission, even though it likely happened during extracurricular activities, after-school sports, but we considered that a school transmission. So the percentage of confirmed transmissions outside of school was a little bit lower than it has been in previous weeks. Usually that percentage is in the 70 to 80% confirmed outside of school. But when we only had 12 new cases and some of those were transmissions in extracurricular activities, you can see where it impacts the percentage. We also track the number of students and staff that are in quarantine by week. And remember, they could be in quarantine because of a, they're close to a positive case at school. Or they could be in quarantine because of a positive case outside of school. Doesn't really matter. If they're in quarantine, a student or staff, then we, we record that in this data. That, that usually runs, you know, between 70 and 100. We definitely like to see that lower than 70. We've had some weeks where it's been lower than 70. This last week it was 103 students and staff that were considered close contacts. That is a little higher than we normally see or we would like to see. And again, I don't want to keep picking on extracurricular activities. But when you have a positive case in an extracurricular activity, then typically all the students that are involved in that team are also considered close contacts. So we've definitely seen the numbers higher in high school. And in fact, if you look on our summary data, the number of close contacts for high school students is the highest, highest percentage of that 103. We also look at staffing. Staffing is something that we've talked to you about before and how important it is for our safety protocols, that we have enough staff in place. So what we track here is the percentage of staff that are out of school for whatever reason. Typically it's an illness, could be COVID, could be something else. But this is just gives you an idea of what the percentage of staff that are, that are gone. So in, in our K5, most of our schools had, were fully staffed, but we had four schools last week that had anywhere from 2 to 7% of teachers out. You'll notice that has a yellow marker. We saw higher numbers in K5 primarily because of a second vaccine issue. So several of our staffs were, several of our staff members received the vaccine under that 1A group as they're considered medical staff in their building. And so this was the time that they received their second vaccine and that did take quite a few staff members out of the, out of the K5 schools. But the 68 and the 912 were looking pretty good this last week. All schools at 68, less than 4%, all the high schools had less than 2% staff out. So that's something we will continue to track. And as we start talking about future vaccine plans, that's something that the board will have to be aware of is that as we start doing mass vaccinations of 1,300 employees, we're going to have to plan how we do that. Cause we do anticipate that second vaccine may, may require staff members to miss school. And then the last thing we track is the contact tracing, how long it takes us to do contact tracing. That's still averaging between 12 and 18 hours. As soon as we find out about the case, we, we start that contact tracing. So what that number represents is, is how quickly we complete the contact tracing after we find out about the case. That was my COVID update. Again, I'd like to continue to share that during my superintendent announcements just so we can keep track of that data at every meeting. The other thing I would just say to the board is on Thursday, days are running together, but I think it was last Thursday. I went to Sealy Swan High School for a visit. The roads were actually really good and it was sunny that day, so really nice drive up there. But had a chance to talk with some staff members and also Principal Palmer and just see how things were going. Things are going well. The students and the staff like the block schedule. And they're likely going to have some sort of block schedule next year. They've been talking about various types of block schedules, but they really do like the schedule they've had this year. I also wanted to point out that typically at the school board visits Sealy for one of your meetings. And since we're unable to do that, my lights just went off in my office, sorry. But since we're unable to do that visit, I, I'll talk to Chair Holland about this, but I think it might be beneficial to have Principal Palmer join one of your meetings and just give you a little bit of an update on Sealy Swan High School. So that's the end of my report and I gotta stand up to get my lights back on. Thank you, Chair Holland.
Thank you, and wait for your lights to go back on. And now we do move to six, the consent agenda. There are two topics under A1 and 2. One is an elementary action item. The other one is a secondary action item. Items are included on the consent agenda with, whenever they're routine perfunctory items that the board sees with any frequency, which means that if they're on the consent agenda, the board won't discuss the items, although we will take public comment. And just for the public's benefit, if there's an item on the consent agenda, any trustee can ask that that item be taken off so there can be trustee discussion. And it can happen at any time, even at the time of the meeting. So I'm not seeing any requests at this point to take either item off the consent agenda. So the first one is to approve the revenue and expenditure reports for the elementary side, and it's the December 2020 expenditure and revenue report that is attached. And so is there a motion to approve the December 2020 expenditure and revenue report? I'm just looking for, if you want to raise your hand, trustee Avagiris has raised his hand and seconded by trustee old person. And as I indicated, there will not be any board discussion. Is there any public comment? Let me just scroll up in participants list. I don't see any hands raised. So all K12 trustees in favor of the motion to approve the December 2020 expenditure and revenue report, please indicate by raising your hand. I see both virtual and real hands raised, and that is unanimous as to all K12 trustees. Then we move on to A2, which is to approve revenue and expenditure reports at the secondary level, and the same is true in terms of the timeframe. It's the December 2020 expenditure and revenue report. Is there a motion to approve the December 2020 expenditure and revenue report at the high school level? Moved by trustee McDonald and seconded by trustee Wake. And as I indicated, there is no board discussion, but all trustees in favor of, I'm just putting my video on so I can vote, in favor of approving the motion to, voting in favor of the motion to approve the December 2020 expenditure and revenue reports, please indicate by raising your hand. And then trustee Vogel, you could vote by phone.
Vogel is yes.
So that is unanimous as, oh wait, I think, I think I asked for public comment, Shannon, but if you can remind me, if I didn't, I'll go back and rectify that. Not seeing any indication that I didn't do so. So we'll go ahead and move on to seven, new business. A1 is a discussion concerning the use of proficiency determination to address and support student learning loss. And this is an information item that Dr. Watson will present as, to provide background. And as the board may remember, we're proficiency has become an important item in terms of measuring student achievement. So Dr. Watson, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
There we go. Sorry, that's my mic off. Thank you, Chair Holland. I have some information to share with the board this evening and then would welcome questions and feedback regarding our proficiency determination plan. And I'll just run through a couple of definitions and then provide you some information on how we, how we intend to measure proficiency this year, this school year. So just, just so we're all on the same page, when, when we consider proficiency, it's, it's a little different than using instructional minutes or what we sometimes call seat time. So as you can imagine, you know, when you take a course or when you're enrolled in school, there's, there's two things to look at. There's the amount of time you're in the class. There's also how, how well you do in the class. So that's the, that's sort of the academic side. What, what, what this definition intends to do is sort of separate those two a little bit and focus more on the proficiency and less on the, the amount of time you spend in class. And there are some pros and cons to doing that, but it is allowable under state law and under board policy. So I, I just want to be clear, proficiency, we define proficiency as achievement towards the class standards. And rather than the amount of time that, that is spent in the course. That's, that's basically our definition for proficiency and how we're going to use it. We have two, we have a policy and we have a state law that allows for that, policy 2422, which is in your agenda. I won't go through that. And then state law 20-9-311 allows districts to include in its A and B count, students who are considered proficient. And then the other thing that's clear in state law and in policy is that the proficiency determination is made by the district in collaboration, obviously with, with our staff and our administrators. Trouble with my. All right. So a good, a good question here is where we might use proficiency or where we already use proficiency. And you may not even know this, but it's been used before, even pre-COVID. So there are some traditional classrooms that use proficiency. Generally like performance-based classrooms, the best example I can give you is classic example from one of my favorite auto shop teachers that I knew several years ago. And he once said to me, you know, proficiency is all about, will the car start or will it not start? If the car doesn't start, then you really haven't performed, you haven't demonstrated proficiency or mastery in that skill. So we sometimes see proficiency in these performance-based classes where, you know, it's really where the rubber hits the road, pardon my poor pun there. But really where are, is it, is it working or is it not working? Are they performing or are they not performing? We also see it in non-traditional settings. Sometimes we have homebound students or students that are enrolled in online coursework and won't meet the, the threshold for instructional minutes. So we use a proficiency determination in order to award them credit or to determine that they've succeeded in a course. We also use proficiency occasionally for transfer students. So sometimes we get students coming in that have demonstrated proficiency in a particular skill. And so we can give them credit for that course or that skill, even though they, they haven't sat through the, our course in our district. We also use it for acceleration and, and that's probably one of the major benefits to proficiency is that if a student can demonstrate a mastery of a skill or mastery of a core standard, we could accelerate them past that if they have, if they have a way to demonstrate that. And so that's another way to look at this. And finally, proficiency was used for a number of years ago and still is used in credit recovery. And the way it's used in credit recovery is that if, if I were a student and I was not successful in a class, like let's just use algebra, for example. Let's say I was not successful in passing algebra. Through the course of the school year, there's probably 10 to 12 different units. And I might actually be proficient on some units and not proficient on other units. Proficiency model will allow me just to focus on the units that I am not proficient on and still get credit for the units that I was proficient on. And that's how we do credit recovery is we, we do an assessment at the start of credit recovery to try to figure out what parts they understood and what parts they didn't understand. And then we focus on those parts that they did not understand. And once they achieve those, then we can give them credit for the whole course. So it's not like having to retake the whole course, but taking just the parts that, that you need. And that's, that's a, that's a classic use of proficiency that we currently use. Okay, so I, I wanted to point out to the board how we're going to determine proficiency this year. This will be done on a much broader scale than we've ever done before. But we have some opportunities for students to demonstrate proficiency. And so one of the things we want to do is try to figure out, you know, which students at the end of the year are proficient, which ones are not. And it does vary by grade level band. So at K5, we'll use a variety of things, classroom observations, classroom-based assessments, district level assessments in reading and math. It's really important the board understands this. You can't just use one measure to determine proficiency. You should, you should use a couple of different measures, especially at K5 and 68. At 68, we'll have that district level assessment, classroom grades can give us a picture on proficiency. And then we're also seeking input from the, the grade level core team. Just like in K5, we would have input from the teacher through those classroom observations. And then at the high school level, our proficiency model is a credit deficiency model. And so basically it's for those students that have failed a course or that's needed for graduation, or they're not on track for graduation for whatever reason. Those are the types of students that we would determine not proficient and we would use our credit deficiency model to get them back on track. And then last thing I just want to say is this is what we're going to do this year to support. to support students who are not proficient. Some of these things we already do. Every school has an intervention team that focuses on kids that might be struggling or kids that are not, are not on track to becoming proficient. Those intervention teams have various strategies that they'll suggest to the classroom teacher or additional support that they'll add to the classroom in order to get students back on track towards proficiency. So obviously, those intervention teams are ongoing and will continue. The other thing we plan to do this year is add extended time. That means extra opportunities for students through intervention. It could be before school, after school, extra opportunities during the school day, and of course, summer school. So we're planning all these opportunities for any students that are not proficient in order for us to, to have more contact time with them to make sure that they are proficient. And then, of course, there is online opportunities as well for students, and there are students accessing those online opportunities now, and they will continue to do so. But online opportunities can also be a benefit, give students more time, give them time on there, you know, when they're able to access it. We, we have credit, credit recovery programs that we already use through the Montana Digital Academy, but we will continue to, to provide those opportunities in an online way. So that's, I'm going to stop there and just see if the trustees have any feedback or questions. This is an information item only. I, I wanted to make sure the board understood how we define proficiency, how we determine proficiency, and then what we're going to do for those students that are not proficient.
So I'm looking for any hands up from any trustee. It looks like trustee Mercer has his hand up. Go ahead, trustee Mercer.
I guess for me, the sort of elephant in the room is, if a student is not assessed to be proficient, then we lose a bunch of money, yes? Because we're using proficiency for our A and B calculation this year. So what do you have in place to prevent that financial incentive from distorting what the appropriate assessment for students is, I guess? Because it's a pretty big incentive there, it seems.
Yes, trustee Mercer, I think just to step back to your first assumption, if I can. I, I believe that one thing that I heard you say is that if they're not proficient, we wouldn't be able to count them, and that's not necessarily true. What we have to demonstrate is that we've provided enough instructional hours or instructional minutes in order to be able to count them. So in a traditional year, with a traditional calendar, we have students at the end of the school year that are not proficient, but we still are able to count them because we've demonstrated enough hours. And so, or minutes. And so that goes to that point that it's our responsibility that if a student isn't proficient to, to provide them additional time. And then, once we can demonstrate we've, we've provided them additional time, my belief is that we will be able to count them as an A, as an A and B student in our count.
And just to explain for anyone who doesn't speak school language, A and B doesn't mean a grade A or a grade B. It's an acronym for any number belonging.
Average number belonging.
Belonging, which is the acronym used to count students in the state of Montana in public schools. And then I'm looking for any other hands up. Trustee Mercer, your hands up again. Do you have a second question?
Yeah, I mean, so just to follow up, it seems like, though, because of remote, are we able to count remote learning? Maybe I'm missing a big step, but it seems like we're short of the 720 in this statute, right? And so then for most kids, we're going to use proficiency, get back up to 720. You're saying, if I'm understanding it right, for those who aren't proficient, we're going to individually mark them back up to 720? Or get them proficient, ideally?
Yeah, ideally get them proficient. If, if we're unable to, then we're going to demonstrate that we added additional minutes to their, to their instruction in order to try to get them proficient. My belief, and, and I say that because this is something that I think will have to be hammered out with OPI and perhaps even our auditor, but my belief is that we'll still be able to count those students because we are demonstrating additional time in order to get them proficient.
And any other questions from any trustee? Not seeing any hands up.
There's a couple of hands in the, actual hands, not virtual hands, but trustee Hovins and trustee Decker.
Sorry, I, I'm not even looking for actual hands. I'm sorry, I've been in too many Zoom meetings today. Trustee Hovins, and then who was the second one, Dr. Watson?
Trustee Decker.
Okay, and trustee Decker. So trustee Hovins and trustee Decker, and I apologize if you raised your hands in a different order.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Watson, I was just wondering what the difference in the assessments slide that you are showing, and the different kinds of assessments, like in the middle school level, where you have, you know, the star testing and then the grades from, you know, your actual classes. When there's a big discrepancy between those two things, what is that telling you? Maybe, and maybe, and has that been very different this year than in years past?
No, I, I think we always have that, trustee Hovins, we always have that discrepancy for some students. And, and it could be telling us a couple of things. It could be telling us that, you know, perhaps a student isn't being challenged in their coursework and/or they're not really focused on their coursework, but they still have the skills. That, that does happen. We have students that can score fairly well on district assessments, but maybe their course grades are, are not, not at the same level. So it could be an engagement issue, like the student is disengaged. That's a possibility. That's where we'd go back to the classroom observations from the, from the teachers and any other classroom-based assessments. I forgot to mention that. But many of our teachers use classroom-based assessments to help make some of these decisions, whether a student is proficient or not. And, and again, sometimes you think, well, if they're not proficient, they're going to get held back, and that's a totally different decision. That's not the decision we're trying to make here. What the decision we're trying to make is if they're not proficient, what other extra supports can we provide them, including extra time to get, to get them up to that proficiency level? So just because they're not proficient doesn't mean we're going to hold them back a grade. That's a, that's a much, much more detailed and comprehensive decision, and that, that's, that's made at, at the student level with, you know, with the family input. So I, I want to be clear, I guess I should have said that in my presentation, that if they're not proficient, it doesn't necessarily mean they're going to get held back, but we want to provide additional supports.
And trustee Decker?
Yeah, my question is, is about the implications of a proficiency approach for students who are proficient on day one or on day 40 or on day 110. You know, because the, the question of what to do if a student's not proficient is one thing, and the question of what to do when, if they're proficient much earlier is another one. And when a student is proficient earlier, it, you know, a student can check out if they're not actually at the level they're supposed to be. And so what looks like incomplete work and a poor grade is sometimes actually because they knew this stuff on day one, and doing the homework feels truly like busy work, right? So I'm just curious about whether this, this, I guess it's sort of two questions. What are the implications for, like, all students, not only those who are not proficient? And also, what support are we able to provide teachers around this different approach to thinking about what students are showing us they know?
Great, great questions, great observations, too. I, I completely agree with you. That, that is the, that is the next level of, of a challenge for us that we're going to need to tackle. I, I would tell you this, though, that we have a lot of great teachers in the district that are already providing additional resources, additional materials, you know? And, and I think that's really the, the professional development that we're going to have to put in place in the future is helping, helping teachers understand it's not just about seat time, but it's also about achievement towards the standards. And if they already are achieving the standards, then what else can we do for that student? And/or do we need to accelerate them? I mean, those are two important questions that, that, you know, I, I think we ask ourselves those questions, but we don't necessarily have a procedure in the district to address that, but, but we should.
And trustee McDonald has a question or a comment?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could give us an example of what would be non-proficient and what, an example of what you would do to help with them get proficient?
Yes, I, I think I can. So I'll, I'll, I'll give you a high school example. If a student were halfway through the semester and was not on track to being proficient, that classroom teacher and/or the administration would meet in, in what we call an intervention team. And that team would provide some strategies to try to get that student proficient by the end of the semester. If that didn't happen, then at the high school level, we also have credit recovery. And the credit recovery model is a proficiency-based model in that we would focus on the areas of that curriculum that the student were not proficient on and try to get them caught up to that so that they can earn that credit. So we, we have sort of, you know, in-time proficiency, at the, at the moment proficiency check during a semester, but we also have the opportunity at the end of the semester to, to, to provide an opportunity for the kid to become proficient through credit recovery.
I, I'm looking for now both real and virtual hands. I don't see any other questions or comments from trustees. As was indicated, this is an information item, but if any member of the public would like to make public comment, not questions, but public comment, here's the opportunity to do so. If you want to raise your hand. I'm not seeing any hands. So thank you for that update, Dr. Watson. I think that was really helpful for all of us to understand that there is some adaptability in terms of dealing with a differing landscape as some people describe it, at least for 2020 and 2021 school year. So thank you for that update. And then we move on to B, which is finance, operations, and maintenance. And the first topic is an information item titled Preliminary Review of Funding Components and Projections for Fiscal Year 22 General Fund. And this would be Pat providing some information that is relevant for basically how the budgets will be projected for fiscal, fiscal year 2022. So Pat, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair Holland. Yeah, so we, I've attached a few, a few spreadsheets to the agenda, and really, my intent isn't to go through the school funding formula. We've talked a bit about that, and there's information we've shared that, 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 that I know you've all looked at, but really to look at the relationship between A and B, which, which is, was just discussed, average number belonging and its impact on our, on our, on the school funding formula. And so what I'll look at is, is really the calculation of the budgetary limits. I'm not going to get into the, how they're funded, because that, that can be a discussion on a different day. But, but really, just looking at, at the, the funding components, the interrelationship with A and B and, and sort of that calculation of the, the base and max budget. And then importantly, looking at kind of what it looks like for, for us, given the, the enrollment decline that we're all aware of relating to the, to the pandemic and what that does mean for our budget. So I'll, I'll jump right in, and please interrupt if you have questions. So on page, page 14, you'll see, you'll see what's been described as House Bill 15, basic entitlement rates. So under MCA 20-9-306, the school funding formula is really sort of laid out with these various funding components. And if you look on, on page 14, we're starting with the entitlements, and, and one of the entitlements is the basic entitlement. And, and these, these graphs were produced by the Association of School Business Officials. And what it shows is the inflationary increase that's, that's currently provided for in House Bill 15 at 1.5% for FY 2022, which is next fiscal year, and then 2.57% for 2023. And it's been the, the pattern of the legislature to sort of backload the inflationary increase, which is savings to, to their budgets. So each, under the basic entitlement, just briefly, as you'll see here, each elementary district, which is a K6, A and B grouping receives a basic entitlement, which is a fixed amount of 53,541 for any district that has fewer than 250 students. If a district has more than 250 students, then each grouping of 25 students receives this inflationary, this amount here listed at 2,0678. And then that amount, as well as the basic entitlement grows, increases. So this is a change that was made a few years ago to, to account for larger districts by including some, some portion of enrollment within the calculation. And, and just for, well, let me, let me just touch the middle school basic entitlement. It's calculated the same way a, a school district with a junior high or a middle school would receive that basic 107,000. And then if this, if the middle school is over 450 students, you would receive then 5,354 for groupings of students over 45. And just for comparison and just for relative significance, the basic entitlement, the combination of the elementary and the middle school is 712,000. That's for the elementary district. That represents 1.7% of the total calculation. So it's a very small, very small portion of, of what's calculated under this formula. The high school is, is a little bit more impactful. It's about 4%, 3.9%. It totals a million two. And in the high school, we receive actually two basic entitlements, one for our urban schools and then one for, for Sealy Lake. There at the bottom of page 14, we, you'll see the, the high school basic piece. And then if you jump to page, page 15, so on page 15, th- this is sort of a, the A and B calculation, and this is, this has popped up. This is the most significant component of the funding formula in the elementary district that makes up about 85% of the calculation, and in the high school, 86%. And, and really, it's as simple as multiplying the calculated A and B by these numbers that are listed here, with one exception that's, that's explained down below. The, the, after the first A and B, first student enrollment counted, each student thereafter is reduced by, in the elementary, by 20 cents per A and B up to the 1,000th student. So that's a total of $200. So after 1,000 students, the amount per A and B is fixed at 5,527 for 2021. That's just the A and B number reduced by that decrement that's listed. And the high school, the decrement's 50 cents per A and B for each student after the first up to the 800th student. And so that, that's $400 that you, you take off of that A and B that's listed. But from a sort of dollar amount standpoint, in the elementary for 2021, that represented $34 million in the budgetary calculation, and in the high school, $26 million. And so the, 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 the funding formula is very significantly and heavily weighted in terms of enrollment when you are calculating the, what would be allowed as the general fund budget. One thing I would point out for the two entitlements we just talked about, and that is that the amount that I, that I've described at 100% of the calculation is where you calculate the max budget. If you take 80% of this calculation, that's what's described as the base budget. And it's significant because the base budget is funded differently. The amount above base is funded primarily by local taxpayers, but the base budget is funded primarily by the state. And it, it has significance when we look at budgets from one year to the next during enrollment decline or, or increasing enrollments, as, as we'll look at in a little bit. But if you just think about the 80% of those two calculated amounts, that'll get you the base budget, and 100% will get you the overbase. Jumping over to page 16, these are the, the final funding components for the school funding formula. Uh jumping over to page 16, these are the the final funding components for the school funding formula. Um and these were added, I believe, in 2005 or 2007, but. A couple of these funding components are not tied to enrollment. Um the quality educator. Payment to the at-risk allocation. The at-risk allocation is based upon. Our Title I numbers compared to the rest of the state. So you see that number of $5.6 million. That's what's allocated statewide. Our share. Uh in 2021 was 230,000 elementary and 118,000 high school. The quality educator payment is based upon our certified staff. And that amount there is per certified staff, so that was um. More of a significant component and also uh not related to A and B, which is which is good, but. The uh elementary amount in 2021 was 1.4 million and the high school 990,000. Uh then we have the Indian education for all allocation that that amount there is based upon per A and B. Um that was 129,000 elementary and 83,000 high school. Uh the American Indian Student Achievement Gap, that's per American Indian student, um the $220. Uh that was 91,000 elementary and 54,000 high school. And then the data for achievement is is intended to recognize some of the reporting requirements and and that's also a per A and B uh. Um calculation, 124, 124,000 elementary and 80,000 high school. In terms of calculating the base and the max budget, you use 100% of these amounts um for both the base and the max. Um the from a relative uh significant standpoint, these the the amounts listed on this page 16. Uh in total represent 4.8% of the calculation in the elementary and 4.32% in the high school. So still. Really, a relatively minor piece to the funding formula calculation. Um now jumping to page 17, this is sort of where we we take that. Those funding components and then and then look at uh their impact over time. And so. Uh here, I'm I'm reflecting a few data points. Um. The first is inflation. That was the inflationary increase during that that particular uh fiscal year. What the A and B counts were. Um and in the elementary, which is the slide on page 17. We have a different calculation for the kindergarten through sixth. Grade A and B versus our seventh and eighth grade students. Uh so that's why those are separated out. Um and then you'll see the max budget that's calculated using. Um 100% of those funding components and then the base budget, which is used. Which is calculated using a a portion of those funding components. And then the adopted budget. And sometimes, as we'll see, the adopted budget wasn't the same as the maximum budget. So if uh if you look on the left, uh you'll see the top column FY 18, FY 19, and then the difference column. I'm just going to focus in the. The difference column that shaded there. Um first, you'll see, you know, this the the difference from one year to the next in the inflationary increase. And then you'll also see the change in in A and B, which was which was minimal from 18 to 19. Um and then the calculation of the max budget and the difference. And I think we might have jumped the slide to 18. There we go. So. Uh the A and B difference. Uh in the elementary is pretty sizable increase, 129 K six students, um smaller decrease in seventh, eighth grade. Um which is a smaller population. Um then you'll see the max budget change uh of 1.4 million from 18 to 19. The base budget change of 1.1 million. And again, that's primarily funded with with state dollars. And then the adopted budget, um which was in this instance at max budget. At uh 39,437 under the FY 19 column. Uh finally, the voted levy of 305,000. That's how much of the overbase budget was voted. Um for that increase of a million 405. So the bulk of that. Increase was was really in the base budget, which is reflective of what of the of the change that you see up above, the million one. Change in base budget, very much dictated by enrollment increase along with a. A decent inflationary increase and then a small overbase levy to help fund. The full amount of that that budget. Um from 19 to 20, similar analysis. Um. Um a- as before, we have a a a really a a good increase in the seventh or eighth grade. Um uh 54 A and B, 54 students. And again, a sizable increase to the base budget. And here again, our budgets increased over $1 million and the voted levy is $200,000. So the. The relative significance between the two you can see there. Um. And then then finally, just just jumping to this uh. Uh to the end, and I I I guess I'll just point out the differences between 20 and 21. There was uh. Real significant enrollment increase, A and B increase, and there was no. Voted levy. So here we didn't did not adopt at max budget. We adopted it something less because the increase to the base budget was was pretty significant. Um and then if you jump, uh look at the FY 21 to the FY 22 estimates. Now we're using 2022 estimates based upon. Um these reductions in A and B, and you'll see that the. K six dropped 132 and then the seventh, eighth grade dropped 49. And that the impact is is a reduction in the what would be the max budget and as well as the base budget. And so significantly here, um. Under state law, you can adopt a budget above maximum. So you can adopt the prior year budget plus inflationary increases and then a but. Uh thereby adopting a budget above maximum, which is what's being shown here. And so here you would have a over a 1.1 million dollar operating levy to increase the budget's $581,000. And and that's not what we're recommending, but just pointing out. What it would take to get to sort of a reasonable increase in that budget, knowing that. Um or believing that we'll have students that'll come back in the fall and will need our our staff and um to support those students. So it's it's a very um odd dynamic with the funding formula being calculated. Using A and B numbers one year in advance of of the actual budget. The actual budget year. Um but before I talk anymore about that, I'll just jump over to the high school on page 18. And and really just focus on the difference columns. Um. You'll notice in the first difference column, there's a slight decrease in A and B. Uh from one year to the next, uh minimal increase in adopted budget, uh 488,000. And a small operating levy, 170,000 for that increase. Uh similar uh from 19 to 20, uh 620,000 increase with a $118,000 operating levy. Um from 20 to 21, um. We see some decline in A and B and and also our max budget. And here we. We we again adopt a budget that's in excess of maximum. It's the prior year budget plus the inflationary increase. And we did not run a note overbase levy, but we relied upon reductions in other levies, excuse me, in other budgets. Um other a- adopted budgets to justify that increase. Uh and that amount was $152,000. Um when we look at 2021 to 2022, we don't see the same level of of enrollment decline that we saw in the in the. Elementary and. Part of that's attributed to the fact that this enrollment count should have been a good year if we look at our demographic numbers. Um it should have been a very good. Uh increase on the high school. It turned out that it it was not with the with the pandemic at play. And so we're like the elementary talking about a a very small increase of 332,000 and an operating levy that's in excess of the increase to the budget. And that that's tied as much to building in $152,000 into that budget as much as anything. The otherwise, the operating levy is more in the 38,000 range, which. Which makes sense because you have a a base budget increasing $294,000. Um so maybe what I'll do is is stop there and just. Just mention again that these aren't what the recommendations were making in terms of this upcoming year. The legislature is talking about a lot of different options. Um. There's a statute that currently exists that allows. Districts to adopt budgets based upon anticipated enrollment increases. The legislature is actually tweaking that's that statute. I think knowing that lots of districts are going to be in our spot where we're going to anticipate. Lots of enrollment coming in in the fall. Um. And that that means a lot of state money going towards these budgets. And so some of the changes to that statute are to allow. But really to require ESER funds to be used to cover that portion of the funding formula. So. Uh Dr. Watson and I are still evaluating and following that impact and that that. Proposed language change to the statute um and how it might impact us. Before I go into the projections, maybe I'd stop and just see if there are any questions about about what I've gone over so far.
Uh Pat, I just wanted to add one thing as well, just to the discussion for everyone's benefit. In the previous agenda item, we were talking about A and B. And using calculations based on proficiency, those are for students that are currently enrolled. The the numbers that Pat is showing you, when when you see decline in enrollment, those are students that actually enrolled. Either in homeschool or decided um not to come back this year. Like. We had a large number of kids in kindergarten that didn't didn't come this year and will likely show up next year, but. The it the numbers that Pat's showing you, the reduction in A and B, those are kids that actually didn't show up this year.
And it looks like trustee Mercer has a question or a comment?
So just to follow up on that, but so then I make sure I'm understanding this. But if someone was judged not proficient, the numbers here are assuming everyone's judged proficient. Okay. And then my second question, which I just can't wrap my mind around, and maybe it doesn't matter for us because we're not really a decreasing district. But where would the? Why wouldn't if you were decreasing in enrollment, why wouldn't you always just adopt the prior budget max? Where does that stop working and become bad? And? And if we over.
While you're declining in enrollment. And as you pointed out, I mean, we're not declining enrollment.
About what this is going to do to our budgets. Um I'm wondering if you um. You know, have any guidance for people as far as where to look to stay abreast of those things or any specifics that you've. Heard about that because certainly as like. This really weird time is happening for people where people's incomes, a lot of them have dropped for a variety of reasons, and yet home prices are like soaring. And so what's going to happen to people's um taxes anyway is a real concern. So whatever we can do to kind of s- keep a steady state around around this whole thing um would be a good thing for all concerned.
Yeah, thanks. So I think uh um. One place to look uh just from a legislative standpoint is is uh it looks like House Bill four will include some language about the ESER funding. I know that there's a there's an upcoming draft of LC 1310, which really addresses the statute I was talking about. And then uh um. I think there's it's on the website. I know I've provided it to trustees some various links to OPI regarding the school funding formula and. And the calculation of mills and taxes. And I'm happy to put that out on the website if it's not there. Just so everybody, the public has an opportunity to look at it if they're interested and. And and really, what's interesting for school districts is that um. When you do, you you mentioned the taxes and mills is that um. Tax value increase doesn't ness- doesn't translate for us as more revenue or more budget. At all. We instead, we calculate to a number that's dictated by a formula. Um and then then we back into the taxes. So as as home prices go up. Uh taxpayers won't see. An increase in 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 payment to schools just because their home prices went up. Um instead, it'll be the mill value will will go down or will go up and the number of mills will go down to to get to that same. Same sort of dollar amount that we're targeting. So if if your home, i- if your value of your home goes up less than your neighbors, your neighbor will uh. Um will pay a little more, you'll pay a little less. All things being equal. And uh that's all things being equal.
And trustee Hobbins has a question or a comment?
Thanks. Thanks so much, Pat, for the all this information. It's fascinating to me and I um. One question I have is how or who do we work with? Who does the district work with? For a best guess on enrollment increases, it seems like there's been an unprecedented number of people moving to Missoula, and I don't know how many of those have. School age children, but they might eventually. And how do it? How in this kind of year and this kind of. Um you know, un- uncertain or unusual year, do we guess how many more people we're going to have next year?
Yeah, that's that's great. Um so one place, the first place I went to, and it really doesn't address. The point you make that people are moving in and there's there may be more um growth. Um we had a uh demographic study done as part of our boundary study here in 2019. We actually updated that boundaries, that demographic study. So I went back to that document to sort of to look at. How are A and B compared to the the numbers created in that demographic work? And then using that ratio. I made predictions based upon that for for next year. And what that doesn't necessarily address is what Dr. Watson talked about, which is the kindergarten. Students who may have taken a red shirt year or doesn't address the folks that have moved in. Um to the community that have that have uh um. That have students, uh school age students that would be attending MCPS. And. I I think it really amounts to a combination, you know, of uh. Which we're doing right now. We're doing kindergarten roundup or kindergarten registration. So we'll we'll get an idea what the kindergarten numbers will look like. I know Dr. Watson's talked about looking at the survey information associated with homeschool students. Um and just seeing who's who would be looking at coming back and um. It's really the next critical piece of information that we need is what number of students do we anticipate? Because I think a lot of the legislative changes will be geared towards us. Building budgets based upon that expectation. Th- that'll be a big part of it.
And it looks like trustee Service has her hand up. Go ahead, trustee Service.
Yeah, I was wondering um i- if the kindergarten students that didn't come this year. Are they going to be coming as first graders or kindergartners next year?
I don't know. I think probably both.
That's it. It's an excellent question. It goes back to that proficiency discussion we were just talking about. So kindergarten um. In state law, kindergarten is not required. Um obviously, it's highly recommended, but not required. So students could enroll as a first grader.
So they wouldn't have to like, you know, pass any um testing or anything, correct?
Not not necessarily. I would tell you that that decision um is also a really important decision. Between a uh parents and and the school. So i- it will take a little bit of time to ferret that out, and it'll probably be kid by kid type of decision.
Okay, thank you.
Any other trustee questions or comments? Pat, I did have one question. Um depending on what the legislature does. Is uh I know that in past years, there have been times, for whatever reason, we were able to do budget amendments. If there was something perhaps unexpected that happened at the legislature, is that something? That could help respond to that situation?
Yeah, that that's exactly what they're talking about. They're looking at at sort of putting a stay on the ability to anticipate enrollment increases and instead leaning on what would essentially amount to a budget amendment. And what I've understood is we would look at our enrollment numbers in October and use those numbers as our basically our budget amendment number. And so based upon the numbers of students that that are counted in October, we would then go back to the to the calculation that we used in in adopting budgets based upon you know, these these smaller A and B numbers and recalculate the base budget. And that recalculated base budget would be the part that would likely be funded through ESER funds. And and that's that's sort of the it it's typically, as you mentioned, when we do a budget amendment, we usually will do a budget amendment to the extent of direct state aid from the state of Montana. And here, the budget amendment would likely be primarily state funded. And it would likely or potentially be funded through the ESER funds that that are allocated to the district.
And just just for everybody's benefit, ESER is the second round of CARES Act money. So remember last spring, we got CARES Act money and we're expecting a second round this spring.
Thanks. I was just going to ask what ESER is. I hadn't heard that term yet.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other trustee questions or comments? Again, this is information only, but is there any public comment?
And Marcia, I had the projections there I could go through really quickly if you wanted or
I forgot that we hadn't quite finished. You took interim questions, so thank you for doing that. So go ahead and you know, continue with the update. I apologize.
No worries. And I wasn't going to spend a lot of time here. I just wanted to sort of demonstrate the interplay between the calculation of the proposed adopted budget and the and the increase to that budget and how it would affect the work that we would do to balance the budget. And so you know, we what's shown here under the elementary is that that large levy to increase the budgets five hundred and eighty thousand and and I I don't see us doing that, given the the anticipated enrollment numbers in the fall, but but just for demonstration purposes, you can see there how the increase in the in the general fund added to that, some retireings, retiree savings would would be the starting point for us to 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 balance the increases to our budgets. And and here we're looking look looking primarily at staff salary increases and some of the inflationary increases to to some known positions and expenditure obligations. And really, I didn't want to spend any more time on that than that unless the the board has questions. The high school is is also showing that over base levy of a hundred and ninety thousand and and a chunk of that is the the savings we we realized last year for the over base of one fifty two. Also a small budgetary increase. And and then the increase to that with retirement savings and and then the the bottom of the page on page twenty, you'll see sort of the net deficit that we'd be that we'd be talking about. And I I think what's what's really odd from a planning perspective is is we used the A and B number I was showing you as A and B averaging. So it takes three years of A and B numbers and averages it. If that number is higher than the actual A and B, which which it is. And I think in the elementary, we showed a hundred and twelve or thereabouts is the reduction, but our real student enrollment is down in the three hundreds. And so the with that level of of decline, you would anticipate some some pretty severe steps to your budget, but in reality, we're anticipating enrollment increase and we we wouldn't want to make severe adjustments to our budget, knowing that 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 we're really looking for staff. We're not looking to to reduce staff. So it's a it's a very odd dynamic this year and and hopefully we'll have some some better information when we talk again in in March, but that's kind of where we're sitting at right now.
And so I I'll just let you know, Pat, I couldn't see your shared screen. And so I don't know if anyone else had that problem. It may just be my computer. But the documents are all online as attachments to the agenda. And so any trustees have any comments or questions on this second part of the information that Pat just provided? It looks like trustee Mercer has his hand up. Go ahead, trustee Mercer.
Two more very brief. I just want to make sure I understood that. So you're saying like on the elementary A and B, that one thirty two negative, that's a three year average? But the actual or did I miss what was? What did I misunderstand there?
Okay, so what we we did is we I'll give you the actual numbers here. So what what you do when you do a three year average is we'll look at the A and B numbers from two thousand twenty, twenty one and twenty two. Or the the A and B counts for those three years. And if the averaging of those three counts, the counts from those three years is greater than the actual count for two thousand twenty two, then you use the three year A and B averaging. So in the elementary, the A and B for the fiscal year twenty twenty was forty four eighty six. This is for K six. And for FY twenty one was forty five sixty. And then for FY twenty two, this this real rough year we're talking about, it was only forty two thirty seven. So averaging those three years together, the A and B numbers forty four twenty eight, which is which is far better than the forty two thirty seven actual A and B count. Does that make sense?
And then what one other question. So on the the general fund reductions on the cost increases, are are those two seven fives? Is that existing contract? That's all that's all set?
That's based on existing contracts, yes.
Any other questions from trustees or comments? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Any public comment? I'm not seeing any hands raised. So we move on under B to two, three and four are somewhat related in that they are certain fund updates that we see on kind of a, I don't know if it's a quarterly basis, but on a regular basis. So we'll start with fiscal year twenty one general fund update, Pat, which is B two.
Very good. Thank you, Chair Holland. So and I'll be brief. On page twenty two, this is a quarterly update. So it's run through December thirty first. And I just had a few items to point out and it's really tough to tell by showing you the budget and then the relative expenditures. Just kind of where we where we stand. But we in looking at our expenditures under certified salaries, which are one twelve, both elementary and high school district were were to the good there when I compare it to to where we stand this time last year. And and I would really attribute that to to some of this COVID impact and and part of it is you know, we're funding a online academy with with our CARES Act and our ESER funds. And to some degree, there's there's staff that are over there that that are now just coming back to the to the buildings because they are, I'm sorry, that positions in the buildings are now just coming back. And so I think we see a little bit of savings there. I'd say the same for para educator salaries. Were were to the good and the for this year compared to last year. Same with substitutes. Same even with homebound that that those are object codes, one seventeen, one twenty and one twenty two. And then the the benefits down below about midway through the page for the same reason on the certified salaries, which are which are lower expended, the same for the benefits. And I think a lot of those benefits have have moved to the CARES Act funding source. Or a fair amount of them. And the utilities are in a little better spot, not by a lot, but a little bit better. Field trip, student travel costs. Not surprisingly, that's that's better compared to last year by almost ninety thousand. And this is this is a lot of activity and athletic travel that isn't and didn't happen to the same degree. It's it's field trips that that hasn't happened and and overnight stays and that type of thing. And then and then the in-service travel, I would just point out there that you know, the ninety nine thousand on the elementary side, that isn't reflective of of travel as much as it is of of our contract for professional development on some of our curriculum adoptions, but we're not having that level of travel by the district at all. And in-service travel is also a coding place for professional services. So we've had professional development, professional training that's happened in the Zoom setting, just like we have meetings here. So I just didn't want you to interpret that to mean some some travel, but but more teaching, learning type of professional development that's been paid for and 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 expanded, but probably not at this point, not even fully used. It's more of a prepaid that'll be used through the year. Those are really the the main ones I wanted to point out. Otherwise, we're 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 consistent with what our expenditures have have been and for the most part.
I'm not seeing any hands raised. I I have one question, Pat. I'm just trying to figure out how to say it. We've got CARES money already in and we've got new sources of COVID money coming in. But we've got, and so you can code certain costs to those, you know, funding sources. But we also probably have higher general costs. I think, you know, custodians have to clean more, smaller class sizes. The Missoula Online Academy staff. Is there any way to determine whether the money identified is trying to help us or public schools get through? You know, the pandemic is equal to or it's supporting, you know, its goal in the sense that at least it's a wash. Is there any way to do that kind of comparison or just data?
Yeah, it's it's a good thought. I think we could look at that the CRF, the governor's coronavirus funds and and we you know, we expanded over four million dollars in really a matter of six months of those funds. And when we looked at that accounting last time we met, a lot of it was in in the salary and benefit area and and I think to your point, even on the custodial side and and the para educator side, a lot of those services are directly related to to COVID support and COVID and in the online academy. And I think we're probably better set up to to evaluate that, given the online academy and and given our commitment to to services through the online academy, which we fully fund and support with with the CARES Act and with the these ESER funds that we're receiving. And I think another way we can look at how it's how it's potentially supported us is is in this way. I think when we get near the end of the year, we'll see you know, probably much like last year, some some savings in some areas and potentially the ability to preserve some funds to to help us out next year with that real bizarre budget year in the general fund. So I think that would be another way to kind of evaluate evaluate the impact of of the the ESER and CARES Act funding in supporting our operations.
That seems like a really good idea. So I look, well, that would be interesting to look at once we've got those numbers in.
You bet.
Any other questions based on my question? Any public comment? Not seen any, then the next update is the tech fund update, Pat?
Yes, thank you. So not a lot to to report here. I I was just going to point one thing out. Page twenty three is the elementary tech report. It's it's very, very solid. You'll see under encumbered, there's a negative. And and really what we're doing here is this is an accounting adjustment because we 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 don't close the prior year until really late in the the third or even the fourth quarter. So we're just backing out some encumbrances that are that are related to two thousand twenty. That's why you'll see a a negative number there. But otherwise, the the tech fund looks looks very good, both elementary and high school, high school on page twenty four. Looks very good.
Any questions or are you completed on elementary or did you want to talk about secondary next?
You know, secondary would be the same point. You'll see that negative number there under the object code six six nine, and it's it's for the same reason. Just that adjustment for the two thousand twenty encumbrances and expenditures.
Any questions from trustees? Pat, I have just one question. Is one of the reasons why I'm calculating certain budget, balanced budgets in the tech fund, is that related to E rate reimbursements and perhaps something comparable to that where the reimbursements come in after the fiscal year?
Well, we we run E rate through Fund fifteen, so it wouldn't affect here at all, but it would offset expenditures potentially.
Okay, thanks. I it's hard to keep track of all the object codes.
Yeah, totally, totally. For me too.
Better you than me. Any public comments? Seen any, then the final update is on transportation fund update on on page twenty five.
Yeah, thanks. This is only really one item to point out because the elementary and secondary are both taken care of on this on this sheet. The expenditures also look good. If you look at the bottom of the expenses, you'll see the COVID relief funds. This was the governor's relief funds, the CRF dollars that we received from the governor's office that were intended to be deposited in the transportation fund. This is unlike the other ones, which were deposited into a separate Fund fifteen account. These actually went in the transportation fund. You'll see the the total amount of our ask when we adopted budgets, the three hundred and twenty four thousand in the elementary and one seventy five in the high school. There weren't many districts that requested transportation funds and largely because their their expenditures didn't go up as a result of COVID. We did allocate some costs of transportation to to COVID, and it really related to our hybrid transportation and how we adjusted our our schedule. Mostly to adopt the high school where we added an additional hour per day to about to about fifty routes. And so that amount through December was minimal in the elementary, about thirty thousand and then a hundred and eighteen thousand in the high school. So we're we charged that expenditure to these CRF COVID relief dollars. And and then we returned the remaining balance to the state. That was the the expectation what was unused was sent back. And I I think in talking to the state the or the governor's budget representative, there was ten million earmarked and only about three million were actually was actually requested. And of that three million, I'm not sure how much was expended, but It wasn't. It wasn't significant on the transportation side. So anyway, that was sort of the main item I wanted to point out, elementary and high school and and otherwise were. We're we're looking decent in the transportation fund as well.
Any questions for Pat? Again, it's information. Any public comments, however? Seeing none. Then we move on to. Item number five, which is to ratify the transportation agreement with target range school district. Which is an elementary action item and the reason I think both Dr. Watson and Pat will explain, but the reason it's that. Verb is ratified is because it's we've been already servicing this student or I don't know if it's students or student, but anyway. Whoever needed being picked up or. Dropped off in the target range school district has that's already been happening to make sure that they've been able to maintain their education. So Pat, if you want to explain why this request is. Before the board to ratify this agreement, I believe it's required by state statute.
Exactly. Thanks, Chair Holland. So the statutes referenced in the background. Information that M C A section twenty dash ten dash one twenty six. And this requires a written agreement when. When a district leaves its service boundary area and enters another district service boundary area and. Even if it's like it is here to accommodate to pick up and drop off. And so. This is making sure we're being compliant with the the statute and. And requesting approval of the agreement that's attached that. And it's really the target range board that's supporting us entering their service boundary area. And and so I believe they have accommodated that request earlier. And and so we're doing the other side of it, which is. Which is basically us saying we'll do so and we're not going to charge target range and obviously wouldn't do that and and it's for a. The the school year. So that's the main. Main expectation on us. Happy to answer any questions.
I would just, Chair Holland, if I might, I would just talk in general terms. Not not specific to this particular incident, but in general terms, we we sometimes have the need to enter other areas of town to transport students. It could be a situation like a family in transition, transitional housing. Or it could be a situation where a particular service is only offered in at a, you know, at a business in a one area town. So. There's a variety of reasons why we would have to do this. And in fact, we have other districts. Last year, we had. Frenchtown District that entered into our boundary to pick up a student for one of those reasons. So. Just in case the board was curious as to why this happens, this does happen occasionally.
I was muted. Sorry. Thanks, Dr. Watson, for that additional explanation. Trustee Service has her hand up for a question or a comment. Go ahead, trustee service.
My comment is just that the Target Range School Board has approved this already at our last board meeting.
Thanks. I was thinking that might be the case because I saw you nodding when we were talking about that. Thanks. Any other questions? Or comments? And so this is an action item by K twelve trustees. So is there a motion from a K twelve trustee to ratify the transportation agreement? With Target Range School District, which is found on page twenty six. Of our agenda attachments to our agenda. Moved by trustee Lorenzen. Is there a second? Second by trustee McDonald. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? See none. All K twelve trustees in favor of the motion to ratify the transportation agreement with target range, please indicate by raising your hand. I'm looking for both real and virtual. And yes, it is unanimous as to all K twelve trustees present. And with that, we have reached item number eight on the agenda, which is public comment on any non-agenda item. As I've explained at prior meetings, we as a board have decided. That we offer the opportunity for public comment, both at the beginning and end of any board meeting. In case there are reasons why someone may not be able to attend the beginning of a meeting. But would be able to attend toward the end of the meeting. So with that, I'll look to see if there's any public comment on non-agenda items at this point. It looks like Mr. O'Connell has his hand up. Go ahead, Mr. O'Connell.
Hi, Luke O'Connell. I'm Hellgate Senior. I spoke at the beginning of the meeting. Going back to that issue of returning to a five day school week, I'd just like to clarify that. From teacher and student polling, both of those population groups generally oppose the move. From teacher union polling, eighty one point four percent of teachers want to keep Mondays remote. And then I'm going to be going through the student poll here. So we set it up so that way students could either agree or disagree with this statement. The first statement, quote, I worry about the impact COVID may have on my own health or the health of my family. Fifty one point seven percent strongly agree and twenty three point one percent somewhat agree totaling seventy four point eight percent. Another statement, quote, Mondays need to remain remote days moving forward. Eighty eight point five percent strongly agree, four point five percent somewhat agree totaling ninety three percent agreeing. Final statement, quote, having Mondays off helps me balance mental health and education during the pandemic. Ninety three percent strongly agree, four point four percent somewhat agree totaling ninety seven point four percent overall agreement. I I think it's really important note that even if it doesn't stop the decision, students really oppose this move. So thanks for your time.
Thank you for your public comment. We appreciate it. And with that, I don't see any other. Hands raised. So with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for participating and for being here to. Be at our meeting tonight. Thank you.